Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of Greater Shrewsbury Council's Finance Audit Committee. I intend to go through some housekeeping matters. This meeting is being live streamed via YouTube and recorded. The recording will be uploaded to YouTube within two working days where it can be accessed by everyone. Members, please use the microphone in front of you when speaking and ensure you turn your microphone off once you have finished speaking. Now, the member or officer will not be able to speak if your microphone is still on. Please note that the council's visual equipment may, on some occasions, focus on or near to the public gallery area. Therefore, those in attendance at this meeting may be filmed or recorded. Attendance at this meeting signifies your agreement to this. If, as a member of the public, you do not wish to be filmed or recorded, please inform a council staff member in attendance and we'll try to assist where reasonably possible. On hearing the fire alarm, we ask all attendees to immediately evacuate the building. Please evacuate via the nearest fire exits and make your way to the community square outside of the main reception doors. Okay, on to the first item on agenda, which is apologies for absence, Ben.
Yeah, through your chair, we've got apologies from councillor Tandy with councillor Glenn Denin subbing.
Lovely, thank you. And also, so welcome to councillor Beattie joining us. And we'll thank Dakota for his previous contributions to the committee. On to item three, which is sign the minutes of the previous meeting. Do we all agree they're true and accurate? Great, thank you, everyone. Item four is declare any interest members may have in the items contained on this agenda. When declaring an interest, a member must state what their interest is. Are there any? No? Okay, thank you. Item five is to consider whether any items in part A of the agenda should be considered in private or any items in part B in public. Are there any? No? Okay, so on to the first order of business, which is item six, which is the progress report and sector update, which I believe you're providing, Jasmine. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, members. In the attached report, you'll find a summary of our progress to date on your external audit, primarily in relation to the financial statements audit. As the VFM summary will come sort of in the agenda item following this. In terms of the progress on the financial statements audit, we have been in our fieldwork phase of the audit for about a month with our team working closely with your finance colleagues in order to review the financial statements for twenty four, twenty five. As part of this, we have selected a number of samples across the financial statements going into the detailed transactions of the authority. We've made good progress overall. However, there are some areas where we still are seeking to select samples and we are working closely with the finance teams in order to get the right listings to be able to achieve this. You recall from our previous update in September that myself and Paris did a detailed review of those financial statements and shared some comments for consideration by finance colleagues. These are well progressed and we are due to expect them in the next few weeks. Yeah. Happy to take questions at that point. It's quite a detailed report.
Cool, thank you. Any questions at this stage? I just have one actually, probably mainly for the scene set, actually. So when we say that the sample's outstanding in the progress report, can you confirm, like, when's the long stop date for all of the work having completed? So are we, are we on track essentially? Is this, is this a normal state of play at this time in the process?
Happy to confirm. So the timeline for our audit was confirmed in the final audit plan that we took to the most recent committee. The, the sort of timeline is for October and November to select samples and then to, to test them in detail. And then for December to be sort of concluding and winding down and review procedures from senior members of the audit team. So we're really working to a timeline of the end of the month at the moment. We're working closely with finance colleagues in order to try and make sure that, that we meet that deadline. In terms of overall progress, we had, we'd set sort of a internal target to get all samples out for the end of October. However, because some of the listings weren't available in the format that we required, we weren't able to meet that for all listings. However, we have made some progress from the items outlined and summarized on page twenty three. And I now believe there's only five left on the sort of the bulleted list in the, the bottom right there. So we are continuing to sort of get through those.
Lovely, thank you. Any other questions at this stage? Lee?
Can I just ask my usual question, which I ask? How does this compare with other authorities? I mean, it would be nice to, we're looking at this and we're looking at slippages and we're looking at where progress is being made or is on track. But the difficulty is, how are other councils in this sort of position? And are we doing better, worse, par for the course, or are we all just working our way through a blomange to try and find something somewhere?
Yes, absolutely. So in terms of progress, we would generally expect the listings to be sort of available on the first day of the audit, ready to select our samples for a normal council. However, we recognise the situation in, in sort of post-backstop arrangements where, where some of those listings haven't been requested or looked at for a number of years because of the, the sort of the backstop period. So I think if we're comparing yourselves to, to sort of other backstop councils, there's a, there's a broad range between some that haven't been audited for one or two years and some that are sort of in the longer field. But I think overall, we've made reasonable progress considering sort of where we were when we started and we've, we've really close to a finance colleagues to make sure we can get as much done as possible in the earlier phases. In terms of the path of the course, I think where it was sort of, where we, we sort of thought we might fall. But like I said, I was trying, trying to be a bit ambitious with, with sort of getting the samples to yourselves for, for the end of October. So I think hopefully that answers your question rather than a load more questions coming from that.
Can I just come back? I know what you mean, the path of the course, but what you're saying is we are in line with other similar authorities. Are we in front? Are we behind? Are we making progress? I'm trying to pin you down, but I do this every time, don't I? I just want to try and find out a comparison, so I know a little better what to look at.
Thank you. So the first division of councils are those in a backstop disclaimer position and those that are in sort of a true and fair position. So you're, you're already in the second bracket. The other disadvantage for this council is you didn't have a go in full on the twenty three, twenty four audit. So when all the sort of the backstops sort of came in, there were in that backstop category, clients who produced accounts in twenty three, twenty four and went through sort of that first year, and it was difficult. So audits that hadn't been audited for several years, our general sort of takeaway is we were finding a lot more error, we were finding a lot more control issues. And having raised those in twenty three, twenty four, it then gave those councils the opportunity to address those for this coming year in twenty four, twenty five. This council had a sort of a very mini sort of audit in twenty three, twenty four, not full belt and braces. So this is kind of your first year of full audit. And it's probably consistent with the sort of, I would say, where things were in twenty three, twenty four. So you're probably slightly behind some of the other disclaimer councils for that reason, but consistent with it being a sort of first year. We're only a month into it and we'll be able to report in more detail of that arrangement when we come to report on our audit findings report in, in February. I'm, I'm pretty clear that, you know, in this year, we'll be able to identify where things are not quite right, identify those control findings. Those have to be addressed by the time we come to audit those sets of accounts for next year. And I have a very different view of progress next year versus this year. So I think this year is one in which we will do a full belt and braces audit. We'll identify all of those control findings such that management can go away and, and address those with the aim of being able to sort of for next year and going forward, absolutely must get through an entire year where we audit all closing balances, all transactions in year. And if we fail to do that, that will be reflected in, in, in my VFM report.
Just to clarify, so don't sleep comfortably in our beds until February?
So in terms of the financial statements audit, we are a month in. We are a third of the way, so to speak. And, you know, we're sort of in the woods at the moment of auditing it. So it would be, we're, we're trying to give a progress report as to how things are going so far. But our full findings in terms of the control findings, where things can be improved, where we're not happy or where we are happy, if the, the case may be, that will be in our audit findings report that will come in, in early twenty twenty six. So yeah.
Cool, thank you. Did you want to present more of the paper, Jasmine, before we have more questions, or are you happy that we take questions of the whole paper? Brilliant. I've got a couple of this, okay. On page thirty two, the item inherited assets. Are you able to just expand a little bit on the concern about substantiation of the assumptions, please?
Yeah, so for this one, it's something that we will draw out in the audit findings report. This is an item where we've selected two samples from your heritage assets. And what we have noted is that the valuation of those assets is reliant upon an insurance report. But the source of that estimate, so how you got to that valuation cannot at this time be substantiated. So this is something where we probably raise a recommendation for the council to revisit that process next year. Look at how that estimate is formed and then it would be auditable for ourselves. So at the moment, with it just being an insurance report, we, we wouldn't be able to place reliance on the source of that estimate. So that's the reason for the, the narrative there.
Lovely, thank you. And also on same page and over, and over the page as well. On the, the short term debtors and creditors, where you talk about the in-year contra movements, are you able to just expand a little bit on that bit too, please?
Yep, so for this, for debtors and creditors transactions, when we are auditing them, we look at a year-end balance sheet date position. So we want to know Joe Bloggs owes X amount to the council on the balance sheet date. The difficulty sometimes comes with the listings that make up the debtors and creditors balances and the accounts where actually they're much more transactional and based off of a brought forward money accounted for and money received kind of nature. On those sort of latter listings, we would not be able to sample on that basis. So we are working with the council to identify within the systems that they have the sort of reports that we would, would find or just for in those circumstances.
Thank you. And then just one more, is it, anyone else got any questions? I'll have to dominate, sorry. Just one more, on the, the sort of broader environment, it's a complete tangent, apologies. Are you able to just confirm that the PSAA has extended the audit services contract for a further two years to twenty nine, thirty, please?
Yep, I can confirm that's in place.
Lovely, thank you. If there's no further questions, oh, sorry, Lee?
Just a very quick one. Can you just explain again on page thirty, what exactly, again, being a bear of simple brain, is meant by accumulated depreciation written out on revaluation?
So this is one of the, the sort of more technical accounting items that, that you'll see in the set of financial statements. What effectively happens is upon revaluation of an asset, the depreciation that's been charged in the intervening period since its last valuation is deducted off before the, the valuation adjustment that takes place on the top of gross book value of that asset. It's, it's more of a, a technical thing and we look at as part of revaluations work to make sure that when a valuation has been accounted for in, in the sort of fixed asset register, which sort of underpins the PPE note, that that accounting adjustment has been performed appropriately. So it's more just tied to the rebalance work. But what I tried to do in presenting this report is showing you the individual lines that you'll be able to match up to the financial statements. Just to provide you a bit of clarity as to, to what we test where. So hopefully that helps.
Just come back, but the problem is it seems here just data awaited. That's why it's red.
So this one, because it's pending the, the valuations work being performed, it's data awaited. Because, so if you sort of refer to the revaluations line of, of the, the page there, we haven't yet received the valuations report for the property part equipment assets. So we can't commence the valuations work. Subsequently, we then can't commence the accumulate depreciation work.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, happy to move on to item seven, which I believe you're providing, Paris. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Evening, members. So in front of you will be our interim auditors annual report. It's interim for the reason we're talking about here. We're still ongoing in terms of the financial statements. And it's right for us to reflect on those arrangements as part of sort of the final auditors annual report. Having said that, there is a sort of a deadline, that statutory deadline of, of being able to report the, the, the auditors annual report by the thirtieth of November and, and by doing this interim auditors annual report, we, we satisfy that. The report has been shared and agreed with management, so that's all part of the process. And again, we'd just like to thank management for their engagement in this process. It's a lot of back and forth interviews and, and review of information. The primary purpose of our audit design report is to provide a commentary on the council's arrangement to secure value for money. And, and members will probably be familiar with, of, of the way that we're, we're required to do this. We look at three separate areas, financial sustainability, governance, and then the three Es, which is economy, efficiency and effectiveness. It's quite a dense report, so you'd be happy to know I'm not going to go into a, a lot of detail, but I'll probably draw out sort of some of what I think are the, the key highlights. I'll, I'll first start at the red because that's where auditors tend to start with their reports. So as was the case, I believe in twenty two, twenty three, twenty three, twenty four, and now twenty four, twenty five, we continue to report a, what we call a significant weakness in arrangements around financial sustainability. I suspect most members won't be surprised with that, but it is still important that it just doesn't become something that is sort of agreed and okayed. This is an important matter. And, you know, the, the key recommendation there i- is important for the, this council to address. The detail of this report does, however, talk about the improvements that have been made within this area, particularly around, say balancing the budget and so forth. But when you step back, and we set it out on page twenty one, working balances as at the end of the year was just over five million. Ojections for, for future year is another sort of drawdown on, on, on those, on those reserves. And I think taking into account those drawdowns will now be in what, what, what we call sort of an unsustainable position for those working balances. Of course, this council has en marked reserves that it could repurpose. But I think that is just a, a real good identification of where this council is in terms of its financial sustainability, that it's important that it brings itself back to balance. The council has obviously got a range of initiatives for that, some longer term, some shorter term. And we're hoping to see over the next sort of twelve months, some of those longer term projects start to materialise in terms of providing those sort of cost-based reductions and, and supporting some of those demand-led exogenous factors that brought the council to this position in the first place. But the, the council will need to cut its cloth, you know, and, and really look at that sort of in-year position. So that's where that key recommendation is. The second area that I wanted to touch on, I can't really go to these meetings without talking about LGR. So I'll, I'll try and do it relatively quickly. We've got some sort of insights there in terms of LGR. Reiterating, of course, the requirement of this council to meet best value in the decisions that it makes. It's, it's, it's now more than ever that that is, is upheld and this committee has a real responsibility from that sort of that governance to make sure that that is happening. And it's also to make sure that key decisions, sort of big investment decisions, are considered through the lens of local government reorganisation. And I think all councils in those sort of patches need to be doing that. So when it comes to things like, say, procurement or, or sort of, you know, a big initiative, well, how does that play into LGR? That needs to be a consideration that the council needs to make. The, the, the other, the other thing that I wanted to touch on was ambition. And this is sort of, I, I don't think it sort of comes through as sort of an improvement recommendation, but I think it is just something to recognise. You know, the, the council has a lot going on. It is quite an ambitious council. It's got sort of, you know, big projects and, and such. Not all councils have that. This council is one. But it also has quite a large business as usual challenge, as we spoke earlier on, when it comes to the financial position and so forth. When you add on top local government reorganisation, there's a lot to do. And so I suppose it's just a, a note to, to think about caution, to think about potentially prioritising those things that matter. And I think for this council, ensuring sort of those, you know, core features of governance, you know, the financial sustainability, those have to be the key thing. And one of those keys sort of hallmark is around the accounts, you know, getting the accounts right and the arrangements to get the accounts must be a priority for this, for this council, because, you know, when it comes to local government reorganisation, going into that with un-audited accounts and those uncertainties isn't the best way for that new organisation to kick off. And we've seen that elsewhere around the country. So, you know, this country, sorry, this council has an important role to play to make sure by the time that happens, you know, it's got as much assurance over its accounts as possible. And then the last one, I just talking about the, the charter, so that, you know, the, the report talks about the charter in various different areas. Often as, you know, these reports, we talk about things that have happened in the past. Rare occasions, we get to sort of flag potential risks for the future, and this is, this is one. So with the charter, I think there's sort of two angles which we've looked at. One is around the financing of it. So sort of the large amounts of borrowing that's, that's been undertaken to, to finance the charter. It's not straightforward. We've talked about the fact that some of it's put through as sort of, as sort of a loan, so there's going to be an interest rate recoverable from that. But then some of it is through equity as well. And it's just to say that, 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 that sort of borrowing at the moment, as far as I'm aware, is held as short term. So there's some interest rate risk around when that's locked in for a long term. So from a finance and audit committee, we're just sort of flagging that is a risk for the council at what interest rate it sort of locks in. You know, I'm not an expert on those, but, you know, interest rates go up and down. So that is just a risk that the, the council holds. And then the second one is around, once the, the charter is sort of fully up and running and sort of the, the arrangement with the, the subsidiaries around the governance arrangements that's put in place to make sure that that risk is managed, because despite, you know, the, sort of the charter sort of operating as a separate legal entity, its success or failure will still come back and be a risk to this council. So it's not one in which, you know, the subsidiary sets up and sort of out of mind, out of sight. What governance arrangements are there in place to make sure that, you know, that the council is aware of how, how things are going? I suppose the overall message is that, you know, we have noticed a lot of improvement. It's a relatively positive report. The financial position will not be a surprise. And, and we have highlighted sort of the good work that's been, that's been, that's happening there. The financial position will not be a surprise, and we have highlighted sort of the good work that's been, that's been, that's happening there. When it comes to sort of the interim bit, the, and it is an important bit around the arrangements that the council has put in place around the accounts. A lot of effort has gone into producing the accounts. I think the council's produced sort of three accounts, three, possibly even four in a very short period of time. So that is positive, but we're only sort of, I would say midway through that journey, now comes a time that those accounts get sort of the rigor of myself, Jasmine and the rest of the team. And there will be learnings from that. You know, it's not going to be a smooth process, but, you know, when that AFR comes, it's about how then the council reacts to that and make sure it improves such that we can get back to sort of as much assurance as we can. As we've talked about before, the opening balance issue is still there. We're not going to unlock that in this year. That is still a live conversation. But we must get back to being able to audit closing balances, transactions in year. And then the opening balances, you know, I'll advise this committee as more becomes available. There is some information around what work can be done, some limited procedures that can be done, and we can look at those. But that is of second priority to do in the in year and the closing balances. Thanks. I'll take questions. Cheers.
Cool. Thank you, Paris.
Yeah, thank you. About LGR, am I right or am I wrong, really? The finance is probably the key to all of it, because if you're going to amalgamate different councils, the finances have got to be right always. It's just be a mix match. Am I right in accepting that?
I suspect you are right. I just have to be really clear that sort of, it would be, it's not really my role to sort of have a view necessarily on those sorts of things. What we tend to focus on is making sure that this council adheres to its statutory duties in the run up to it. And that is the risk that we have, that, for example, you could take, you know, your eye off a thing in terms of delivery of the services to residents up until that point, sort of make decisions that probably you wouldn't make otherwise and so forth. So that's really where our risk appetite is. I think whether or not the successor organization is going to work from a financial point of view, that's a matter for government and sort of the decisions that they'll need to make by the end of this year, I suspect. But yeah. Sorry, I can't answer that question.
Cool. Thank you, Paris. Lee?
Yeah, I was going to deal with your first two points, but as Derek has brought this, which is your second point, I am going to push you on this. Because talking to councillors in other councils, they're now beginning to reach a point where it's going to be increasingly difficult to keep councillors focused on finances and financial propriety, when in two years' time, those councils won't exist and the money could be simply absorbed into a much bigger debt pool from a local authority or much bigger local authority. And that's my first one. I think Derek's point is entirely accurate. Why should we? I think we will, but why should councils continue to focus on a long term financial planning when in actual fact there is no long term financial future? But I now come to my first point, which if I could come back to a computer, you said about financial performance for platform. Just read on page seventy five, which says here, we continue to be satisfied. The council's weakness in financial position has been driven by demand pressures and economic factors, rather than there being insufficient financial controls or adequate financial planning. Now, that must be true of most councils around the country. We are being buffeted by external forces that we have absolutely no control over. And that's before you come on to some of the financial pressures such as a homelessness issue. And again, I come back to the point I continually make. How does this council compare with other similar councils? Thank you, Chair.
So in terms of the first point around LGR, I think the council has a statutory duty and various statutory duties. And I suppose the point that's being made is that those don't stop right up until that point. And I think there was guidance issued by the sort of the minister on that point specifically around the statutory duties of councils and the fact that those are not changed during this period. In terms of the second point, you're absolutely right. There are, and we reflect in here that there are sort of those exogenous factors, demand led stuff, things within the economy that have, you know, buffeted the council. In the short term, there probably isn't that many levers the council can pull. But certainly over sort of the medium and long term, investment and sort of infrastructure changes can be made in order to sort of adapt to those. And the council has done that, particularly say around homeless. There are some projects to be able to to alleviate some of those acute housing issues. It takes some time until those actually bear fruit in terms of, and therefore, sort of in a short term, you might have to plug the gap. I suppose the point that we're sort of starting to make now is it's important that some of those sort of medium term, longer term investments start to pay off. Otherwise, the council is going to have to sort of make some more difficult decisions than it otherwise would. I suppose that's the main point that we are trying to make. The comparison question is quite a difficult one. We do have some data on that. I'll have to go back and get that. We have what we call sort of a CFOI platform, where we get a lot of data, different economic data, and we can benchmark that. And indeed, we did do that as part of this work. It doesn't form as part of this report, but I can certainly go back and see if I can draw some of that out and perhaps bring it back as sort of a separate document outside of this VFM report that this committee might find helpful. But that platform, I think, is available for members, for officers to access as well. So I can share that information with you.
Thank you, Paris. Any further questions? I've got a couple, but before I jump into them, I'd like to reassure those in the audience and those watching at home that this committee will continue to discharge its full statutory duties in assuring the finances and the governance of this council. I'm sure it'll speak for officers as well, the same sentiments. Just a couple of questions. On page sixty three, Paris, would you mind expanding on IR one around the capital program? We've talked about this before, actually, in other things. I dare say we'll talk about it, talk about the risk register as well. But if you wouldn't mind just sort of expanding a little bit on your thoughts and recommendations, please.
Okay, I think this is about. So I think the observation that has been made is sort of you have a capital program that says X and often it comes in at Y. That is quite common across all councils. I suppose the the observation that we're sort of making is perhaps there's some optimism bias potentially within that sort of what you expect in terms of capital for the year. And perhaps it might be best to go for the more likely outcome, but then recognize through potentially scenario planning, upside or downside. But it does feel as if invariably the sort of the position, the budgeted position, et cetera, is sort of at that ambitious, this is the place that we hope to get to. And it was just about, say, perhaps one might wish to come back down to the more likely one. Because if you, I suppose if you track capital spend versus actual from the budget and the actual, you'll often find that the budget is a lot higher year on year.
Okay, thank you. I think I actually wouldn't mind returning to that point actually in a second. As I read IR one, it looks more around sort of governance frameworks around managing that portfolio of change or managing that portfolio of delivery. So a capital slippage in the finances with budgeting perspective is obviously something key. I dare say we're going to talk about it later on when we talk about the two finance boards. But in terms of your testing and your observations, are you comfortable with the governance that the council has around that portfolio of change and that portfolio of the capital program? Is robust and sufficient? Or is that something that you think that we should actually look to enhance?
So I think the improvement recommendation sort of identifies areas that one could strengthen, but it isn't something where I think there's a significant weakness. It's not a major sort of cause for concern. Clearly, whenever you've got these sort of large projects that you will carry sort of corporate risk and that is, you know, that is normal. But the improvement recommendation is really framed at sort of saying, how could you improve in certain areas? But I'll be honest, it's not an area of significant concern for us at this stage.
Okay, brilliant. Thank you. And yeah, then I think to continue the point you're making in the previous answer. On page seventy four, we talk about the, I guess it's the, it's the medium term. But I think really the point around capital slippage, which I dare say we'll talk about because I think it's coming up in this quarter's reporting. But in terms of, I mean, just speaking to anyone at other councils, it does seem that it's a very common thing. It's quite difficult to get things built and there are constraints in the labour market, the construction market, other things. So I guess, as you were saying, this is an observation that you make fairly frequently across all councils. And so for us, it's more around how we budget and plan for the risk of upside and downside as opposed to it's abnormal that there would be slippage.
Yeah, precisely. I would say the vast majority of councils are in a similar position, but it doesn't take away the fact that the observation is there that if you're consistently undershooting your capital, then perhaps there's something about optimism bias within that budget in the first place. And one can still account for and have plans for the upside, you know, if it all goes as one expects and make sure that, you know, there's enough financing there and so forth. But, you know, I think it might be one to think about, one to take away for management if they feel that's helpful or not, to look at whether or not you could sort of move, take away some of that optimism bias within the capital program.
That makes sense. But both are, I think, observations, just I think the converse is also true, that a lack of ambition to deliver on behalf of residents is probably also equally as concerning. So I appreciate that the ambition is probably linked to the optimism as well. But no, thank you for that. Is there any other questions that we'd like to ask of Paris for item seven? No, thank you, Paris. Thank you, Jasmine. James, on to internal audit progress report, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, the report at appendix two is a second update on progress for twenty twenty five, twenty six, covering only a short period from the first of August to thirtieth of September and focuses on the plan for quarter one, quarter two. Now, section four, starting at the bottom of page one hundred of your pack, shows how our resources have been used over the period. The tables in section five commenced on page one hundred and two outline the progress with finalizing work outstanding from twenty twenty four, twenty five and progress with the reviews for quarter one, two. Unfortunately, no reviews are finalized during this short reporting period, but members will be able to see that all the planned reviews for quarter one, two of this year have progressed with field work either underway or completed as of thirtieth of September. Now, the lack of progress with finalizing reviews from last year is due to a backlog created by our previous resourcing issues and other work that we have been trying to deal with in terms of assessments for the new standards and the work that I've needed to complete in relation to failure to prevent, which have limited my ability to assist the audit manager with clearing that backlog. However, to provide you with some assurance that work is actually progressing, I can confirm that since the first of October, field work has been finished on the review of homelessness and supervisory reviews have been completed on items three, eleven, eighteen, twenty and twenty one. Now, the auditors are now working on reports and we are working hard to try and get all of those finalized before Christmas. As noted in section six, we've not yet finalized a sufficient number of reviews to identify themes or root causes. But we're investigating whether we can leverage some AI tools to analyze previous audit reports to look for themes across some of our earlier work in the interim period. Obviously, if we are able to progress that, there'll be something in the next update. An update against teams' performance indicators for this reporting period is provided at section seven of the report, which starts on page one hundred and six. We've made good progress against the plan for quarter one, two, with seventeen percent delivered and a further twenty eight percent underway as of thirtieth of September. Now, while that may not seem like a lot, this is actually probably the best position we've been in for several years. And it's worth noting that the percentages are based on number of reviews we expect to undertake in the whole year, and we do not have fifty percent of the plan in the first six months, because obviously we have to account for time to deal with overrun in old year work. As of today, I can tell you that plan delivered is at twenty eight percent with a further thirty nine percent in progress. Finally, section nine of the report provides an update in relation to all agreed actions in the table commenced on page one hundred and eight. Now, the last column of that table obviously contains the key information, which is the number of actions that have reached their due date and the number completed. Although the performance figures do not look good with only fifty two percent of actions completed, the total number due is actually very low and those outstanding all relate to the community grant review and had an implementation, all had an implementation date of thirtieth of September. So they've literally only just failed to meet target date and, to be honest, don't present a significant level of risk. The update we've received from the service is that changes in staffing have hampered the update of a policy, which was one of the main actions. Consequently, that has delayed some of the other actions because they were dependent on that policy update. We're keeping in touch with the service to obviously follow up on progress with those. I'm happy to take any questions members may have.
Cool. Thank you, James. Any questions? I just have one, just returning to the last point. On the community grants on page one oh eight, obviously, five of the actions were high and they're outstanding. It could be, can you expand a little bit? How material is the impact, though, of those actions not being complete?
Yeah, although the actions are high priority, that's high priority for the risks to the service meeting its objectives. In terms of materiality, the risk to the organization is very low. We're not talking huge sums of money in that particular area. As I say, the high priority is based around the service itself meeting its objectives in relation to that, which is why I've said although they are, they have literally just missed their target date, but we don't see it presenting a significant level of risk.
Lovely. Thank you. Any further questions for James on paper eight? Okay, if not, we'll move on to paper nine, which is the council full progress update, please, James.
Thank you. Yeah, as with the internal audit update, this only covers a very short period for the first of August to thirtieth of September. Now, section three on page one hundred and sixteen of your pack, again, shows our resources have been used over the period and details the level of time spent on each of the key areas outlined in the plan. The tables on section four commenced on page one hundred and eighteen provide an overview of the work undertaken in each of those areas in the plan, although again, limited due to the short reporting period. Now, for fraud awareness and prevention, there have been service specific sessions with revenues and benefits and housing. And we've also completed the first session with managers, which actually covers the roles of both internal audit and counter fraud with some fraud awareness stuff built in. For proactive counter fraud activity, we have continued to ensure that the NFI remains up to date, and this is detailed in the next item on the committee's agenda. We've continued to work with housing in terms of right to buy and succession applications, but we haven't commenced any other proactive activity during the period. The table on page one hundred and nineteen shows the summary of results from external investigations and the associated savings. Now, despite it being a short period, it was positive to see the recovery of a council property. And last week, there was a trial at the county court that led to the outright, an outright possession order being granted as a result of our investigative work. So this will see another property recovered shortly. There's also a brief summary of the other counter fraud activity on the table on page one hundred and twenty. And an update against the key performance indicators for the reporting period is provided at section five of the report, starting on page one hundred and twenty one. Although the savings in this period are relatively low, overall, for the year to date, the total savings after precepted deductions will still exceed the fraud team costs by more than one hundred and sixteen thousand. I'm happy to take any questions members may have.
Cool. Thank you, James. Any questions? No? Okay, we'll move on to item ten, which is the NFI annual report.
Thank you. Yes, this report provides an update on the National Fraud Initiative exercises and the progress made in the last twelve months in dealing with matches received. Because we've got things so up to date, this focuses purely on the twenty four, twenty five exercise rather than multiple years. There was a change in approach with this exercise. We've services tasked with reviewing their own matches and only referring cases to the fraud team where discrepancies require investigation. Now, council tax is the only exception with those matches remaining with the fraud team for checking. As you'll see, most matches have been subject to their initial checks and the vast majority of those now closed. Overall, the exercises generated more than three hundred and six thousand in savings, although after precepted deductions for council tax, the benefit to Gravesham is just under fifty one thousand overall. Data submissions for twenty five, twenty six, the twenty five, twenty six council tax exercise will take place in early December once the electoral register is published. And results on those are usually received within a few hours, so review work will commence before Christmas. So I don't know if members have got any questions on the progress. So I don't know if members have got any questions on the progress with that particular exercise.
Any questions on this one? No? Okay, we'll move on to item eleven, which is the failure to prevent fraud self-assessment, please, James.
Thank you. A slightly different one for you this evening. The Economic Crime and Corporate Transparency Act introduced a new offence of failing to prevent fraud. Now, as noted in the report, the offence is only committed where an organisation benefits either directly or indirectly from a fraud committed by an employee or an associate. Now, the only defence for the organisation would be to demonstrate that they had reasonable fraud prevention measures in place. Now, it's important to note that the organisation cannot be held liable for this offence where they are the victim of the fraud. So matters like tenancy fraud or council tax fraud would not have a bearing on this. Given that there are limited scenarios where the council would likely benefit from a fraud, the likelihood of the risk materialising is relatively low. However, the impact would be substantial, given that the offence carries unlimited fines. We've conducted a self-assessment against the Home Office guidance for reasonable fraud prevention measures to provide the organisation with some assurance over its ability to defend itself should that ever be necessary. Now, it also provided an opportunity to consider fraud prevention in a wider sense, not just in relation to this act. The assessment rag rated, we rag rated the council against all the requirements, and this was largely positive with only a limited number of amber areas and no red at all, which is largely due to the prevention measures already in place. Now, some recommended actions were identified to enhance what the council already has in place and provide it with increased assurance that it is in a suitable position to defend itself. A management team have agreed to all those actions. We'll now be drawing up an action plan and timetable for those to be completed. The first of these will actually be the dissemination of the new counter fraud and corruption strategy to all staff, which Cabinet reviewed on Monday of this week. So I don't know if members have got any other questions on that.
Thank you, James. Any questions on that? I just have one of us, actually, on four point five, so on the on the action plan. I'm conscious that the last time we met, we talked about a fairly comprehensive action plan around the internal audit findings. I'm just asking, in terms of the timeline to deliver the action plan, is there sufficient management bandwidth to have both those processes running or are they both fairly staggered?
Yes, the the internal, the action plan for internal audit largely sits with my service, obviously, because that's actions we're taking. We've actually completed quite a few of them already. This, the actions from this don't just rely on my service, this is about the organisation as a whole. So there's things, obviously, some of them do sit with the counter fraud team. So I would hope that we can, where possible, get a lot of it done before the end of the financial year. There are some that are going to require business cases being drawn up. Some of the recommendations are around digital fraud awareness tools. That's obviously going to incur a cost. But we have to balance that against the fact that my team deliver fraud awareness training. But as we've picked up at previous sessions, the generic sessions we offer weren't necessarily being signed up to. If we've got digital tools, we can make it mandatory, roll it out to all staff. It'd be very difficult for me to resource mandatory training, face-to-face training for all staff, because we just don't have the bodies to do that. So some may take a little bit longer. But as I say, this is about enhancing what we already have in place. We haven't identified any significant weaknesses in the fraud prevention areas. So as I say, this is just about adding that additional layer so that we can better demonstrate those fraud prevention measures if we're in the position of needing to. As I say, I think the likelihood around that is fairly low.
Lovely, thank you, James. Any further questions for James? No? Okay, thank you. We'll head on to the General Fund Budget Monitoring Report for Q two, which I believe Gary's going to present.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So beginning on page one three seven of the report pack is the General Fund Q two Budget Monitoring Report focusing on the period up to the end of September. In addition to noting in the report, it also seeks approval of the externally funded Pride in Place project to be added to the capital programme, which is worth one and a half million over two years. And this was approved by Cabinet on Monday just gone. Starting with the summary table on page one through nine, you will see a projected favorable variance for the year of three hundred and eighty nine thousand. This compares to a two hundred and fifty seven positive variance, which was reported at the end of Q one. The main areas of improvement since Q one are fifteen K worth of savings within communities relating to the release of agency staff budgets, what we use to fund its Bartek back office management system, twenty thousand pounds savings within commercial waste due to increased recycling and food waste, nineteen K savings as a result of staff restructuring changes within waste recycling, and an eighty five K release of funds into working balances from the IT infrastructure reserve. Moving on, the summary position for working balances can be found in the table at the bottom of page one four six, which shows the year-end position of just over two point nine million. This is made up of the two million minimum general fund working balance plus a balance of zero point nine million on the additional general fund reserve. The overall reserve is therefore predicted to fall below the recommended level of three point two five million, albeit by a lesser amount than was anticipated at budget setting in February. The medium term financial plan, which can be found at appendix one, shows that working balances excluding the two million minimum reserve will be extinguished during the twenty seven, twenty eight financial year. This was previously forecast to occur during the twenty six, twenty seven year as part of budget setting. Key improvements that have come out of balancing the budget activity, which can be found in the table at the top of page one four five. The section contains a summary of the one point seven worth of identified activity that is currently being considered. The table on page one four six sets out the movement in general fund earmarked reserves for the year. This indicates a net decrease of just over two million with year-end position expected to be just under twelve million. And lastly, in the report, moving on to capital, page one four eight, the table there sets out the general fund capital programme with expenditure for the year amounting to sixteen point seven million compared to a working budget of thirty seven point one million. The key projects here being the charter at twenty five point seven, disabled facilities at two point four and a new leisure centre at one point nine million. Capital in-year forecasts have been recast as part of the report, which reflects expected spend for the remainder of the year. The most notable change from Q one is the in-year reforecast for the new leisure centre, which was seven point one million at Q one, which has been reduced down to one point nine million for this year. This has been partially offset by the previously Cabinet-approved three million pound increase to the charter project. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Gary. Any questions? I've got a couple of us, okay. On paragraph four point four, do you mind just expanding on what extended producer responsibility is and just expand on it being a new source of funding place?
Yeah, I'll do my best. So EPR was introduced earlier this year. It's an incentive essentially aimed at manufacturers or importers of goods or brand owners to reduce the packaging that they use for as part of their products. They essentially pay a fee to central government based on waste statistics and tonnage. So depending on those statistics, they pay a fee and that fee is then passed to local authorities. The allocation for the council for this year was six hundred K, which was increased by a further five hundred K. It's which is subject to PAC UK actually recovering funds from producers. So it depends on how well that works out. We was notified today of actually of the next year's allowance, which has gone up to one point four, anticipate one point four million. And so it's obviously become quite a significant financial contribution. So we're just at the moment working with the Environment Director on plans and actually spending that money. So I'm sure that will come through committee, of course.
Lovely, thank you. Very positive. And then lastly, on page one hundred and forty eight, you talked about the the general fund, I guess, the reforecast has been done recently. Leisure centre has come down to one point nine, but we've only spent six K year to date. And Milton Place is at one point six and we spent zero today. Given that there's not that many months left in the year, how how reasonable do you think those forecasts are in terms of, obviously, the ambition that we alluded to earlier?
The leisure centre in particular, I think, is a lot more reasonable or accurate than it was at Q one. Obviously, we've been waiting for, obviously, the whole project was based on love funding. So that's obviously pushed things back somewhat. Obviously, we're in the phase now where we can actually start planning in more detail and the enabling works are planned for this year. So that's kind of what that forecast is based on. In terms of the Milton Place project, again, that's obviously been led by our partners. The one point six million there is, that amount is fully from the Branfield Release Fund, which has been earmarked for that project. So based on what we know at the moment, that is what we are, you know, expected to spend in the remainder of this year.
That's great, thank you. Any further questions on this? No? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item thirteen, which is the Housing Revenue Account Budget Monitoring Report for Alex.
Thank you, Chair. So the HRA Budget Monitoring Report for quarter two starts on page one hundred and fifty nine of your agenda pack. So as of the thirtieth of September, there's a forecast overspend of five hundred and thirteen thousand, which can be seen in table one of the report on page one hundred and sixty one. That's a slight increase from quarter one, which was at four hundred and seventeen thousand. That overspend will need to be met from the HRA General Reserve unless we can determine that that can be offset within the existing budget envelope. That forecast also includes a planned overspend of one hundred and forty nine thousand, which relates to expenditure that's been identified subsequently to the budget being approved in February. But we will be matched from a contribution from the HRA Priority Reserve. The main contributing factor to this position is a forecast shortfall in rental and service charge income. As previously reported, the delay in the purchase of Crescent House has led to a reduction in the rent generated by the HRA. This position has been compounded by an increase in the number of properties forecast to be sold under the Right to Buy scheme following the government announcements to change discounts available to tenants, which has caused a surge in the number of applications. These two factors mean that there's an adverse variance of two hundred and eighty five being reported against rent on dwellings. In previous years, there's been a significant adverse variance on repairs and maintenance. Significant effort's been made at budget setting to ensure that those budgets were set at a more appropriate level to meet the demands of the service as it responds to continued significant demands around damp mould and the new consumer standards, which have been introduced by government's commitment to improve social housing. In quarter one, we reported a favourable variance of four thousand pounds. That's increased to a favourable variance of fifty one thousand at this quarter. There is a further adverse variance on service charges, which has increased in quarter two. There's been an increase in caretaking costs due to the use of agency caretakers to cover vacant posts. A decision has been made to absorb those costs by, to cover that cost rather than passing those costs on to leaseholders in the current year, and that results in an adverse, an increase and adverse variance of sixty two, taking the total to four hundred and thirty nine thousand. There is an overall Neil variance on capital financing, but within this budget heading, there's some significant variances. Some external grants have been received, which weren't known about at budget setting, and that's contributed to a favourable variance of one point five million and we're anticipating a reimbursement from the council's insurer Zurich to cover the cost of the repairs at Rose Street of one point two million. Those two favourable variances will then be matched by an equal adverse variance as a result of applying those income streams to finance the capital programme. It's based on the variances identified as at the end of Q two, the HRA is anticipated to retain its three million pound working balance and the HRA General Reserve balance is expected to reduce from one point to one point two four million from its opening balance of one point seven five million. If we turn to the capital on page one hundred and sixty six, there's a forecast spend of just over eighteen point six, sorry, it's commitments of eighteen point six million and forecast spend of thirty three point five point five million. I'm happy to take any questions on that report.
Cool, thank you, Alex. Any questions? Lee?
Yeah, can I come back to your two point one, which is the expenditure exceeds income by five hundred and thirteen thousand. Are you suggesting, I just want to break that down, are you suggesting that's because of a surge in right to buy or are there other factors?
Yeah, so there is a reduction in the rental income that we're going to receive. So two hundred and eighty four thousand of that, five hundred and thirteen, is to do with a reduction in the rental income. So there's two aspects of that. We anticipated that we would have bought Crescent House at the start of the year, so we'd have had a full year's worth of rental income. That purchase still hasn't happened, so we can't earn any rent on that at that point. But we have seen a surge in the right to buy requests coming through. So therefore, we set the budget based on the forecast of selling twenty properties. We're now up to about thirty, forecast about thirty, selling them. So obviously, when we sell them, we don't then get the rent in for the remainder of the year. So that's what's happening there.
Can I just come back? So what, on average, what is the normal average number of the last, let's say, five or six years in terms of right to buy? I thought it was beginning to drift away, but what you're suggesting is because of the government pressure, people are jumping in much quicker now than they have done previously.
So we have seen that sales of right to buy fluctuate quite significantly over recent years. So we were around probably about ten, fifteen for quite a few years, then it did shoot up quite significantly for a couple of years. And we had seen, you're right, we had seen it started to tail off. And then when the government announced reductions in the discounts available in the future, we expect those, the numbers of sales to reduce quite significantly. But tenants had a window in which to submit their applications. So what a lot of tenants have done is to put their application in to kind of put the option on the table that they could could try and do that. So we have seen, yeah, we have definitely seen an increase in that period of the government announcing it and the deadline for doing, for submitting those applications. It has significantly gone up.
Just just one final point. So that's, that seems to be the main contributing factor, rather than people not paying as they should do. Is there a reduction in normal tenants' rental income?
We will look at the level of outstanding debt as part of the budget setting process, and we'll bring that through in quarter three, once we've got, once we do that exercise. So at this point, I can't say we, we take into account, there'll be, and we include within that budget when we set it, including an assessment of how much debt we think will be outstanding and not forthcoming, but we'll do the exercise to compare that as part of budget setting.
Thank you, Alex. Any further questions for Alex? I have just one, actually. On four point twenty, the favorable variance for new bills, not to labour the point around capital slippage, but do we think that that variance will be locked in for the next couple of quarters?
I think that probably is quite optimistic. I think it probably will be higher than that. And we are working, we need to start working, well, we are working closely with the department. And it's something we need to sit down with Tom, who's come into into the role and is now responsible for that team, start really, really profiling their schemes over the number of years, rather than having full budget in one year when we know the development will take two or three years to come forward.
Lovely, thank you. Any further questions on this paper? No? Okay, then we'll head on to paper fourteen, Treasury Management Midyear Review, Alex.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So the Treasury Management Midyear Review starts on page one hundred and seventy seven of your agenda pack. So this is the second report this committee receives on Treasury activity for twenty twenty five, twenty six, the first being in the strategy itself, which was presented to committee back in February. And you'll receive the third and the annual report in the summer of twenty twenty six. So the report sets out both the Treasury activity and the impact of capital expenditure for the year up to the end of September, set in the context of the current economic background, along with the forecast of interest rates, both of which have been provided by our Treasury Management Consultants MUFG and can be found in sections three and four. So the report is based on the position as of the thirtieth of September and reflects the positions we've reported in the General Fund and HRA's budget monitoring reports, which we just discussed. As of this date, the capital programme forecast for the authority is approximately seventy million pounds, which, of which thirty six can be funded from existing resources. And that creates a borrowing requirement of some thirty four million pounds for the year. And we have undertaken some refinancing this year, so loans that matured in April of this year have been year have been replaced with new loans that are in the region of 4.75% to 4.8%, compared to 4.85% to 5.2%, and loans taken in June to August are now at about 4.25% to 4.3%, compared to 4.75% and 4.85%. So, we are seeing a reduction in those levels of debt that we're taking on. We do have some more refinancing to undertake during the, towards the end of this financial year. So, we're continuing to use the council's cash balances to reduce and delay the taking on of external debts when possible, but when we are securing the debt, the duration and the duration, we do sit and discuss that with Sarah, Section 151 officer. So, the capital financing requirement for the year is forecast to be £212 million and gross debt of £197 million. So, the capital financing requirement is the authority's historic unfunded expenditure, and because we have been able to utilise that, internal borrowing is above the gross debt. So, details of the council's liability benchmark is included in Paragraphs 6.9 and 6.10. So, now that the council's accounts are up to date, we have been able to use the Treasury Life System to generate that graph for us this year, and members will see there's a significant gap between the council's current level of debt compared to the council's net requirement in future years. So, that demonstrates that we've still got a number of, significant amount of borrowing to undertake. Moving on to investments, as of 30th of September, the council's investments were valued at £35 million. That's split between internally and externally managed funds, and there's an Appendix, Appendix 1, details the investments at that point. So, I can confirm that as of 30th of September, we've acted in line with the approved limits in the annual investment strategy, and no breaches have occurred. So, details of the council's externally managed funds can be found in Sections 10.11 onwards. We currently have one remaining active property fund, CCLA, and three active investments in multi-asset funds. As of 30th of September, the value of those investments totaled £11.3 million. The Llosbury Property Fund terminated on the 30th of May 2024, and to date, we've received 91.2% of the council's investment back. On the termination date, there was an anticipated capital loss of just over £1 million, and we recognised £952,000 of that at the end of 2024-25. Any remaining loss will be recognised in the current year when the final holding is returned. So, the fund has now sold all its assets, and we anticipate a further distribution in the coming days, and one remaining towards back end of the financial year, once the fund's gone through the full liquidation process. And the Hermes Property Fund also has had some activities, so that merged with the LNG Managed Property Fund on the 15th of August. The council weren't eligible to transfer its investment into the new fund, as it's only available to pension funds. Therefore, on merger, the council received its investment back and resulted in a small capital gain of £25,000. So, the value of the council's investments in multi-asset funds is below the initial investment. However, capital values have been picking up gradually and over the last few months, and have picked up further since in the October valuations, the one in the report. But happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Lee?
Yeah, so I just reduced this down. I'm still trying to get my brain around the idea of, well, at 6.9, liability benchmark, and then the diagram, which is in 6.10. Is it possible, in very simple terms, to try and explain the diagram and what liability benchmark means?
So, it's essentially designed to show the gap with your existing borrowing. So, the existing borrowing is the bars at the bottom, so the blue bars at the bottom, and our budget requirement in terms of what's set out in the capital programme are the, is the green and the black lines above. So, essentially, that gap, the white space, is the amount that we need to borrow to meet the capital requirements that the authority's got in its capital programmes. So, that's essentially, it's tried to represent it graphically.
Looking at the diagram then, which is 6.10. So, the gap between the green line and the blue bars is the amount of borrowing that we effectively have to establish. And it's going to go down, I gather, but it does seem to be going up in short term. Could I just ask explanation of that?
Yep, so it'll go up in the next few years, because obviously you've got some significant schemes coming through, so the remaining spend on the charter, then we've got, the leisure centre will come through as well, and we've also got the new build programme, so you'll see it going up. But then, as we make medium, minimum revenue provision repayments, so MRP repayments, that debt starts to come down.
But this does presuppose a status quo at this moment in time, and of course, we know the status quo is going to change significantly in the next couple of years, and so presumably this may be optimistic or pessimistic.
Yep, so it's a requirement of the potential on Treasury indicators and the codes that we provide this information. So, yes, we appreciate that creation may not exist beyond a certain point, but it's a requirement for us to provide it, based on if things stayed as they are, this is what it would look like.
Thank you, Lee. Further questions? I just, I guess, also just returning to that point quickly. Obviously, each of the items that you've mentioned and the other items in the capital programme do have a business case, and there will be a return on investment, either a financial or non-financial return. So, like, they've all gone through that process, haven't they, before we get to the borrowing point? My question, my first question actually was on the table in 6.4. Are you able to talk quickly about the drivers in the change for the grants and contributions and the capital receipts, please?
Yes, so in terms of capital receipts, so when the government announced changes in the discounts for the right-to-buy, they also included changes to the way we can finance new build programmes. So, we previously had a limit of the level of right-to-buy receipts we could apply, but we now, there's no maximum on that level for each scheme. So, therefore, whilst we were, would have been reliant on using borrowing essentially to fund that gap, we can increase the level of capital receipts, so the right-to-buy receipts, so that's why that has gone up. In terms of grants and contributions, that is, trying to think what they are, got me, I can't think for a minute, gone blank on it. We'll come back to it, sorry.
We can come back to that.
Oh, come to me in a minute, sorry.
We can come back to that, thanks, Alex. On to my other question, actually, which probably, I think probably ties into the point that Parrish was making earlier about the sort of short-term borrowing linked to the charter. So, in 7.2, we talk about £31.5 million of refinancing purposes, but I think this committee's heard a few times in the Treasury Management, actually, this current scenario in terms of where the financial climate is, it's actually far more prudent to take shorter term borrowing than it is to long term, which obviously the converse has been true previously.
Yes, that's correct. So, we take advice from MUFG in terms of the type of borrowing and the duration that we take. Their advice is, because obviously interest rates are elevated at the moment, is to take on short-term, short-term debt rather than take long-term debt, whereas we can borrow, say, for example, on, for the HRAs, right, if we take, it's around about 4% on that, but if you're taking 50 years, it's almost 6%, so that it's really, really expensive to take on long-term debt. So, it's not prudent for us to do that. You take it on short, you refinance in, and all that time, the interest rate is coming down, so you can get in each time it's come down and benefit from it that way. So, yeah, we are following the advice that we're getting from MUFG on that.
Brilliant, thank you. Any further questions for Alex on Treasury Management? No, thank you very much. Lastly, but not least, Pat, we're going to talk about the Corporate Risk Register. This one is one for noting, as the previous papers have been, but also if members can voice any concerns or any comments, and also anything they'd like to highlight to prepare for the 26-27 register.
Thank you, Chair. I think you've taken most of my speech away there. The 2025-26 Corporate Risk Register, which you can find on page 201, was approved by the full council on the 15th of April 2025, and the seven identified strategic risks in the register are outlined in Section 1.3 of the report. A thorough mid-year review has been undertaken by officers and considered by the council's management team, with mitigating actions detailed on Pages 215 to 232 of the pack. It's quite thorough. I don't intend in going through each and every one of those, but obviously happy to take questions. Whilst all the risk reviews have resulted as being satisfactory or good, the council does remain alert to developments of both existing and evolving risks as part of a corporate risk management working group, which meets regularly to review. Since the register was approved, I can also confirm that risk management training has been provided to both members and staff, and I'm pleased that a vast number of you actually attended that training. The feedback that we've received on that training has been positive from both members and from officers. Finally, as already been said, the development of the council's Corporate Risk Register for 2026-27 will commence in December, and members are requested to initiate the process by putting forward suggestions for any new or emerging risks for consideration, as well as to recommend which of the current risks should be carried forward. And I had a look back, and I'm pleased to note that this time last year, there were a number of suggestions made forward by this actual committee, which then were fed into the new register for 25-26. So, happy to take any questions or comments, thank you.
Lovely, thank you, Pat. Any questions, suggestions, comments? No, just one from me, actually, Pat. I think link back to, yeah, to the auditor report earlier. For 26-27, are we able to sort of have a look at those programme management risks, mainly around the management of the full capital portfolio, any risks from there? I think, being frank, it's present throughout the risk register, so I think it probably is more just tying together a few of the strands into a single thing, but you can confirm that's being looked at, please?
Yes, Chair, that is certainly something we will look at. Obviously, it's already been mentioned, as you say, in a number of areas. We're working with colleagues to see if we can make more realistic profiling of budgets. We would investigate it anyway as part of our normal budget setting process, and we would capture any risks either within an existing trigger or a specific trigger, or we could assess it separately as a brand-new risk, you know, depending on, you know, once we've deliberated over that, how big a risk we see that to be.
That's lovely, thank you. Any further comments? Great, just a question, I think, to you, Pat, in terms of timelines for when we'll next see this item again, we've got another bite of the cherry for the next risk register.
Trying to think when our next meeting is, actually.
February time?
Yeah, it will be February, so, yeah, so we will, because it will go to council in April.
Lovely, thank you. There's no further comments from anybody? No? Okay. The last item on agenda is in the business. Nothing has been raised to me in advance, but happy to open the floor if there is any AOB. There's not? Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll call it there at 2046. Thanks all.